Okay, Mr. Chairman, whenever you're ready.
Okay, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Felkoff.
Present.
Mr. Colang.
Yes.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Pelletin.
Here.
Your Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Choka Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here. All seven members are present. This meeting is being conducted. Everybody mute themselves, other than the trustees, other than the board members. So better, better.
Why don't I mute everyone and Reinhard, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, hello.
I think so.
I assume you can all, you can all hear me. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order issued by Governor J.B. Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of government bodies like the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this evening, we are conducting our business in compliance with the state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local cable access Channel 6. It is also being broadcast on the Internet, on YouTube Live. And the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/willmet/live. To participate in the meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the village's website at www.willmet.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on Channel 6 or on YouTube and call in to the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 602-413-1555. I'll repeat, the phone number 872-239-8225, and the meeting code is 602-413-1555. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live in the Teams chat and emails to condeath@willmet.com. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the village board. All comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we typically do. For our meeting guests joining by Teams, you are not speaking. When you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruptions of the proceedings. For those of you new to our proceeding, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make recommendations to the village board of trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening will be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.E of our village ordinance are met. The village board of trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on July 28th, is that correct?
Yes.
2020. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board has final say on all applications and will make its determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the village board of trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five village board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We vote instead by a tierney of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four firm votes. We have, all members of the, all seven members of the board are present tonight. So, majority of four obviously would be sufficient to approve. So, I was going to say if, even, we have the full complement of members, so I don't think it's necessary for anyone to, to request a continuance, although I believe they can. Can they at this stage, Lisa?
I guess you could, but I don't know that you'd want it necessarily granted.
Right. I don't know if there's a reason for it. The cases which are here this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address. Tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted to support, in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention as to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the application has had a chance to, applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on this application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have any comment, and so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, but we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any comments received through the YouTube chat, Team Chat, or email will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning, or if you are planning to testify tonight, I will ask you to raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
I do.
You.
With that, thank you. I will, as other people, as other people who may want to join us during this meeting this evening, I will from time to time ask whether, those that wish to speak, whether they have been sworn in or not. With that, Ms. Roberts, can we please have the first case?
Our first case is 2020Z17, 1120 Michigan Avenue. This is a request for an 804.0 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation on a legal non-conforming structure. And we have three applicant representatives here.
Okay, please proceed. I don't know who wants to speak on behalf of the applicant, or all three?
And don't be.
I'll go first. Ryan Kettlecamp, 1315 Sherman Place. I'm the landscape architect representing Jeff and Lynn Chikazian. Jeff Chikazian is on this call, as is my project manager, Asha Shagley, who may support me with facts and figures that she has at her fingertips. So, what we're doing is, again, you have all the materials. Essentially, what we're doing is reinstalling a circular driveway for the historic house that was built in 1915. It's a National Register House designed by John Van Bergen, and the homeowners are trying to be as respectful of that as they possibly can. In going through the variance process and install, in laying out the circular driveway, we are 9.8% over the permitted front yard square footage coverage, but we're six feet under what is currently in the front yard. So, we are requesting a variance to be true to the original design of the John Van Bergen house, which had a circular drive in the port cochere, and that we be allowed to be 9.8% over the permitted front yard coverage, or lot coverage. Again, keep in mind that we're six feet under what is currently there. So, Lisa, is that sufficient?
That sounds good to me. I just wanted to add for all of our attendees, I do have the meeting pack queued up if you'd like me to show any of the graphics associated with the case.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on, in this case?
This is Jeff Chikazian, I'm the homeowner, and no, really just echo Ryan's, Ryan's points. We would like to, just basically keep just under the current square footage that existed in the house before that. We very much want to respect the historic aspects of the house. We love the architecture, loved it for a long time, and we are really enhancing the architecture. It's a house that really needed it. And one other aspect is that, at some point, somebody had put in a parking pad right in front of the port cochere, which is, was not original to the house. We're going to remove that, and so it's actually going to bring it back more to the historic way the house was built.
Thank you, Ms. Chikazian. Anyone else? So, I think, other than the applicants, does anyone else wish to speak on this case? Do we have anybody, Ms. Roberts?
We don't have anybody that I know is associated with this case.
This is Bob Sermon, I've got a question.
Sure.
I appreciate the design you've done. I just wanted to confirm, because I think it is fairly narrow, what is the width of the driveway when it, when you exit at the sidewalk? Is it about 10 feet or so, 11 feet?
Asha, can you confirm that it's 10 feet, correct? Yes, it's 10.
It is 10 feet, okay. And the reason, when you enter on the south end of the property, the reason for that squared off corner is to, is that a low wall that's in front of it?
No, there's no low wall in front of it. There's a walkway that goes across the front, from the front door around to the, to the side of the house. And again, we're just trying to keep with the Prairie School, squaring everything up to the house, that was the primary change. The original driveway was somewhat free form and flowing, and we were just trying to be truer to the architecture of the, or truer to the architecture and keep things rectilinear, is what we were trying to do. But there's a walkway that goes across the front of the house and then connects it to the side.
Does anyone have further questions?
This is John Colang. So, there were so many, so much going on, I couldn't really see, is the old driveway still there, or has it been taken out, or?
The old driveway is largely still there, but it's a construction zone currently, and it's being, it's, part of it's been demolished, but it's partially still there.
Okay, so what was the old material, what's the new material going to be, just out of curiosity?
The old material was asphalt, and the new material is going to be, it's, Ryan, I don't know the technical name of it, but I believe you call it 1920's concrete. It's concrete that actually looks old and original. In fact, some of it's already installed at the house, and it looks, you can't distinguish the new concrete from the concrete that was originally put in, in 1915.
Any other questions by the members of the board for the applicant? Seeing, hearing none. I think at this point, we can, no one else, we have no other members of the public that wish to comment, so I will conclude the presentation by the applicant and ask for a motion.
We should.
This is Bob Sermon, I can make a motion.
Sorry, Winston?
We should check in, make sure there's no comments on YouTube also. If you would.
Okay, hold on.
There are no comments on YouTube.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Remind me to do that.
What about Twitter and Instagram?
Don't give anybody ideas.
Reinhard, this is Maria. It took me a minute to unmute myself. I do have a question for the applicant, and that is, I'm struck by the fact that this is the third or the fourth variance that's being requested on this property in less than two years, and I'm wondering how many other variances the owner expects to come in.
I don't believe, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe there are any others, and the variances, I believe we've had maybe two others, they've all been fairly minor, and it's also my understanding that this, this variance is only required because of a statute that was accidentally deleted. Normally, it would have, you know, a year or two ago, this would have, would have gone through. We expect, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we expect any other variances.
Jeff, you're correct. You're correct about that. We've applied for permits for all other aspects of the project, and it was only applying for the permit for the driveway that checked, that triggered the variance process. That's correct.
Any, if there are no other?
I think it's, you know, a minimal request since they're reducing it slightly. Since I'm an architect from an architectural standpoint, I think it's an improvement. I like the design, and I think all of us are glad that you're restoring a landmark home, so I can support it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Bob. You know, I think, you know, it's a reduction in overall impervious surface. Obviously, you know, some of these older homes, they need, you know, more consideration. You know, there's not a lot being asked here, and so I think it meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Any other comments by the members of the board?
Don't forget to unmute. Sorry, unmute. Oh, sorry. I thought you were going to unmute me. Why can't you? I agree with the other comments of my fellow commissioners, and appreciate the restoring the historic elements, in particular, replacing the asphalt with the, you know, with this concrete. That would be nice.
Okay, I, no one else wants to speak? Just my concluding comments on this is that I agree with all that has been said. The other thing I wanted to add, that if you made this, if you removed the circular driveway and cut off one leg, the port cochere, which is part of the historic nature of this house, would not, could not function. So, from that perspective also, you need that, that circular drive, and so I can approve this as well.
That's correct.
So, can we go to a, Ms. Roberts, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin? Mr. Felletin?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So, this will as a positive recommendation to the village board, which will meet on this case on tonight, 28. Thank you very much. You will receive a notice from Ms. Roberts confirming the village board date, and we can proceed to the next case, Ms. Roberts.
Before you do that, I'm going to move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2020Z17.
Second.
Second. Now, we have to go and take a roll on this.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Great. Thank you very much.
Have a good holiday.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So, that concludes this case, I think. Something else left. I think, I think we should roll one more time, just. Okay, Ms. Roberts, let's go to the next case.
Our next case is 2020Z18, 472 Highcrest. This is a request for a 3.41 foot front yard setback variation and a 230.0 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation, permitting the construction of a two-story addition and new front porch on a legal non-conforming structure. And the applicant is here.
Go ahead, proceed. Is it Mr. Coleman?
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you, Chairman, thank you, Ms. Roberts, and thank you to the board. Appreciate all the hard work that you all put in. My wife is sitting here with me too. I'll screen over so she can wave and say hi, and be on TV as well. Yeah, so, so thank you very much again, and we appreciate you taking the time to take a look at our property and also to hear our variance request. So, we're requesting a variance to the front yard setback of 3.41 feet, and that's in order to build our, build a garage in the space that was clearly allotted for a garage when the house was built in the 1950s. Additionally, as Ms. Roberts mentioned, we're looking for a variance to the front yard coverage ratio that's partially included because of the garage space that will be added, partially, partially as a result of what's already outstanding as impervious space on the property, partially because of an encroachment that my neighbor's driveway has that was installed sometime before my purchase, that comes into the property and is included in that impervious space in my front yard, and then partially because of the porch that is proposed as well. And we can speak to the purposes of those items as we, as we go through here. I was going to share a screen just to show everybody what we're looking at as I explain, using the technology that we do have here. So, so if you see, this is, this is the current flat of survey. The, the house is at the end of Highcrest Drive, so you basically, Highcrest Drive is a, is a, is a dogleg street that comes, that comes due north, has a cul-de-sac, then heads west, has a cul-de-sac, and then after that cul-de-sac, there are, there are six more properties, including my own, that is at that dead end of the street, and there's, there's basically an ending to the street that basically ends into my, into my driveway, which you can see right here. And that actually creates an interesting component, because the driveway is basically, has to be that, that width of the, of the, where the street ends, otherwise it would be extremely awkward in that space. And so, that's, that's speaking to the, the coverage component. I suppose, maybe going back and, and talking about the garage first with respect to the, the setback request, the house is currently sitting in front of the 32-foot setback requirement. The proposed garage space comes additional 2.2 feet, 1 inch in front of the current house as it stands. The driveway, the, the garage spaces is, and the entire, the entire project is set to be fairly modest. The garage, the interior of the garage will only span less than 19 and 1/2 feet, and, you know, part of the reason for doing that is because we're at the end of the street, and we'd like to keep as much side yard space as possible between us and the, and the neighbor's front house. And so, the other component is the reason we need that additional space is first and foremost, is to tie into the property. And so, the way, the way that the narrow garage will then lead into the property is through the back end, it's not possible to lead in through the side of the, of the garage because of the narrowness of the garage in order to fit two cars in the garage. So, we need the entrance to be in the back of the garage. So, the back garage leads to the proposed mudroom, and then that mudroom, as you see, ties into the hallway that already exists, and that enables our, our new kitchen space and family room space that bumps the back of the house to be as, as small and modest as possible. One of the pieces of consideration there is impervious space with respect, respect to our backyard, which does have a tendency to flood, as we're, we're in that area of the low spot on the street and in the area. So, so the goal was to keep as much, as much space in the backyard as, as was possible. In addition to that, if you, if you do have a chance to look at the other houses on the street, this house is a hempel-style house, and all the other hempel, hempel-style houses have a garage that, that juts out in front of the house, and so that's, that's a consideration that we, we were thinking about as well, so that it looked similar to, and the goal was to have the addition be as similar to the, the original build as, as was possible, and you can see that through some of the additions that we made around using brick to match and so forth on, on the specific garage spaces. So, if I pause there, and then I can move, I guess, you know, Chairman, I'll move over to the, to the request for the, the front yard coverage. And so, the front yard coverage, we basically would have a garage, a driveway, a side paddy, a sidewalk way as it, as it currently stands, and just pushing the sidewalk way to the side of the yard so that you can access the back of the property accordingly, and then the, and then a fairly modest covered porch. The covered porch is, is both functional in the sense that we, we'd like to have the porch in front. You know, part of the benefit of the, of the dead-end street is to allow children to play in front, in the front yards and run around, and, and being able to sit in the front, in the front porch would be quite nice to, to watch the children play in the, in the, in the driveway and in front of the house. In addition to that, though, it does serve a practical purpose. Highcrest Drive is, is a drive that, that does flood as well, and it comes, it comes pretty high at times, and has surrounded our house on the, on the south and the, and the east side of the house. And so, the porch will allow us to put a barrier between the house and the foundation that we have, and the, and where the waters, waters can come as a, as a last line of defense. But additionally, will, will the, the roof of the porch will, will further allow us to move water away from the foundation and have it offset into the front yard as permitted. And so, that's, that's kind of the, the dual purpose of that, of that porch there. We do have a large oak tree that I'm sure you saw, that the sign, the notice was posted upon. That, that oak tree, as typical with, with, oh, sorry, maple, is, is, as typical with, with those, with those maples, does have a high root line, and so the roots do come into the, into the, into the front yard, and, and therefore, it's very hard to, to otherwise scape the, the landscape such that the runoff would, would then run away from the house. And so, again, this porch does, does, does that as well from a practical standpoint by creating a barrier of a, of a few inches off the ground to stop water from coming closer to the foundation of the house. And so, as a result, then, that, that porch is roughly, I, I think it's roughly 120, 130 square feet. The bay window causes a more complicated calculation there. And, and so, so that, that does create a decent portion of that front yard coverage request. And so, I think with that, I've covered both of the, of the requests, the front yard setback for the garage, and then also the overall. And so I think with that, I've covered both of the requests, the front yard setback for the garage and then also the overall impervious space and front yard coverage ratio request.
Thank you. Does anybody other than members of the board wish to speak on this case? Lisa, do they have anyone?
Lisa, you're muted.
Austin, I don't believe we have anyone who is attending for this case, but you can speak now if they are.
Great. Lisa, did you receive a letter from my next-door neighbor, the Foxes? I know that I've consulted with them and they have given me the thumbs up on the project. Specifically, walking the property with them, and they had mentioned that they might send an email to you.
Yeah.
She, yeah.
You provided that to us this late today.
Any questions by the members of the board for the applicant?
Yeah, this is Riley Pelton. I was there today and we actually chatted for a bit. But I can't tell from the drawings and I neglected to note while I was there, do you have an existing front sidewalk that leads to the front door?
I, no. There's a stoop and that stoop then has a stair that then leads to the garage, to the driveway. So if I pull up the current plot of survey, there's a stoop there. There is a gravel, some gravel that was here with a couple of stones that helped you create this angle. Because basically parking two cars on the driveway doesn't really permit you to walk past the cars and then using the angle properly. So we generally speaking walk on those stones that were there when we purchased the property.
But your plan is to add a new concrete walk?
So the concrete walk that's proposed is an angled concrete walk that then just takes you from the proposed concrete porch back to the driveway. Let me see if I can find a different picture of that. It's right there with that angling that occurs. And there's the concrete walk on the side of the house that permits it in the back of the house. There, you can see it here. There's a jut out basically for something that's to grade prior to making the one step up on the porch.
So it doesn't extend all the way to the street? It's about as minimal as you can get?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I have, this is Maria. I'm not sure that I understand the hardship associated with not having a front porch. Could you talk about that?
Yeah, so the front porch, like I mentioned, is a practical, has a practical approach of allowing us to stop water from coming towards the foundation of the house. Without doing the front porch, there's no way to properly grade the land, given the height of the house and the root structure of the maple tree in the front. Which is seen right here in this picture. And so the front porch is a design in order to give us a barrier such that when the street does flood on the occasions that we get those large storms and the locks are not open. There's basically a push that the water will not then penetrate to the foundation of the house.
So this is John Coling. Do you have a basement?
We do, yes, sir.
And is there leakage somewhere along that wall if water gets over there?
We have had water come over the, come over the foundation on one occasion since we've lived here. Otherwise, we've had water that has penetrated through the way that our water service comes in. And that's been sealed about since then and has held. Part of the project that we're looking at doing is reinforcing the foundation as well. In addition to repairing the drain tiles throughout the house. Thank you.
So this is Brad Falco. Where does, where do you anticipate that the water will go once you have built the concrete porch barrier in the front of the house?
Yeah, so currently, the water will go on our neighbor's yard. And it does currently go on the neighbor's driveway, which is sloped downward. It goes on the neighbor's path. And show in the current survey. And then it goes, it further goes to our backyard. So it does push around the house based on how the grading works there. But generally speaking, the water, the water doesn't, the water doesn't get as high right there. And so I don't really think that, I think it will just stay there. And then typically, it then dissipates within a few minutes after they open the locks. So it's really just that initial barrier that it creates.
Is your house graded higher than the neighbor's house?
Not, no, not to the, not to the, to the east. The neighbor's driveway is to our direct east and that is lower than our current grade with respect to where the house is. But the grading then is lowest in our backyard.
So you anticipate more water in the backyard once the front porch is built on?
I think that we might get a slight amount more, but I think it will retain in that space, given the barrier that the front porch will create.
Right.
So just as an example that you might have caught to, my neighbor to the west has created, and that includes the new driveway that he put in. There's a hump on his driveway that then pushes the water back away from his house. He has a sunken driveway that where the garage is below grade. And so that hump that he's created at some point in time pushes water back towards our way. The street, the entirety of the street doesn't flood. It just floods in front of our house and partially in front of the house to our east. And so the Highcrest Drive does go, does slope towards the end of Highcrest Drive, so the west of Highcrest Drive. So additional water push can happen on the street itself, which is obviously beneficial. As much water we can keep on the street, but then would easily dissipate into the storm sewer when appropriate is the best solution.
This is Reinhard Schneider. A question, continue on the subject of water flooding. You mentioned also that the east side, you get water on the east side. I noticed that there is a light well or there will be one on that side. And what do you do to protect the foundation on the east side? And the second thing is if the water in the south, on the south face, comes up to the edge of the building. When you have the, when you build the garage, the garage will be at grade. So will it slope up somewhat? Is that what you're arguing to solve water not getting into the garage? Two questions.
Yeah, so the east side of the house currently does have a window well. I think that's what your question was there?
Right.
And so that window well has been an area of concern for us. We do plan on rebuilding that window well and tying that window well into the drain tiles. We did get some seepage from that window well on the last water that we've had. That window well is original. It's a three-tiered window well that was not built high enough. And so I think, you know, building the window well to today's standards and using a single piece of metal window well will definitely help that. That's our, that is our ingress window well on that one there. And so I think that should cover us on that side with redoing that window well. Your second question, apologies, it just slipped. Oh, the driveway grade and the grade of the garage. Yes, sir. So the driveway does grade up at the time. And so the area where the garage is going has actually typically not gotten, not had water on it whatsoever. We have used that as a point of area to put items that we didn't want to get wet that were in the yard at various times. And so I have less concern about the garage getting water there because of the current grading that's there. With that said, though, we are planning an interesting, a design of the garage, and I can show that. Where the garage will actually have a 0.5% grade to it internally. And so if water does come into the garage, it will easily leave the garage because of that grading.
Thank you.
I do, this is Bob Sermon. I have a couple of questions.
Bob.
I understand the positioning of the garage to be in character with the other neighbors and connection to, makes a lot of sense. I am concerned it is, 10% is a fairly large request. And I'm concerned about just the coverage. If, I guess, I've never, we've never, in the seven years I've done this, we've never had somebody try to create a barrier using, you know, an additional structure. And to me, I think, you know, it kind of impacts the neighbor. It seems, because you're so close. And I guess I'd rather see just a covering at the front door area and not have the porch. I think to put in a porch, I mean, if there was some concrete you wanted to plug the building maybe, but it just seems difficult to grant a variance when you're adding a lot of concrete to that front area. A lot of times also, we ask applicants to, when they do have a walk in the front, would they consider something other than concrete that could be more impervious to reduce that request? So that's my gut feeling. I guess I'd like to see what the other four members have to say.
If I may address a couple of points there and appreciate the comments. So the request, the square footage of the porch, which is 130 square foot, whereas the total coverage request required for the plan is 230. And so the request for the porch itself is really, is really only about a 5% request on the coverage ratio in that respect. The, the water, as you mentioned, does, you know, if it were to be pushed to my neighbor's yard, it would then, it would then flow back to my yard because of how the flows work. And so it does flow, I go back to the current survey. It flows down my neighbor's concrete walk and then as my yard is lower, it then flows back into my yard. As part of the plan, if it did flow that way, as part of the plan, we're looking at doing a similar project to what the village is doing over at the community play space or community fields. By putting a drywall storm sewer retention into the back corner of the property. And so we'll be able to store water in the property and then have that water dissipate quicker into the, you know, into the ground than is currently in place. And so we're trying to, you know, we've done a study and had some professionals have a look at determining how much was required there. And I believe it's in our permit request to, you know, to basically be able to store the water and take care of the water on the property.
I would add to Mr. Sermon's comment, this is Maria Choker Urban, that in looking at the houses on Highcrest, there's no other home that has a front, a covered front porch that spans the entire width of the house. You have a few homes that have covered entrances, but that's really what's typical of the homes on your street. And, you know, making an exception in this case to add a feature that is not currently pervasive in the neighborhood strikes me as a bad precedent.
This is Brad Falco. Have you at all looked into something other than concrete to put in something that would be wood or some other structure?
I think, yeah, I think that would then not achieve the goal of having something that would create that water barrier.
So it's all about the water barrier?
I mean, yeah, that's, I mean, yes, I mean, we would generally like the, we would generally enjoy and like the porch. But the water barrier is basically what we've designed over time in order to try to, you know, keep the water away from the foundation there. Again, you know, making note that we really can't grade the property like you might want to grade the property so that it flowed back towards the street and away from the house, partially because of the root coverage and partially because of the bay window that's already there.
So this is Riley Pelton. Somebody mentioned earlier that one of the ways that past applicants have been able to reduce the amount of variance that they're looking for in terms of the impervious coverage is to try and use a different material that is pervious.
Yes.
And in this case, I know I had talked to you about the width of your driveway and if that was going to change. And you had expressed your interest in asphalt driveway that's the same width. And it's not a very long driveway and it's from the curb cut to the entrance of the garage. So there seems to be, if you're interested in maintaining the concrete porch for, as a water barrier and as an amenity, the new sidewalk, albeit fairly small, that leads from the driveway to the stoop. And then the sidewalk that leads around to the side of the house, past the garage, are two areas of possibility. And I don't know if you would consider using a different material other than poured concrete for part of all of those sidewalk areas?
Yes, sir. So that is one thing that we would consider doing if not, if this front yard coverage was not granted. It does come at an increased cost, as I understand it from my contractor. But that is something that we would be willing to do. And again, that would be with respect to the, if I can find a picture. With respect to this additional walk here that's at grade and then also the walk on the side of the house.
You have, I'm sorry?
This is Bob Sermon. I know I had suggested some changes in materials originally, but we don't have anything in the village code or anything that's been approved. I know we've gone through this several times to know how impervious brick is, you know. It's only impervious, I think, if you leave joints between it and have an actual drainage system. And that becomes, I think, cost prohibitive to do that. So Lisa, not sure if that would make much of a difference.
Lisa, this is Reinhard. Can you tell us what credit the applicant would get if he did a pervious brick driveway cycle?
Yeah, you'd get an additional 224 square feet of allowable coverage.
How did you calculate that?
That is 10% of the front yard area.
Okay.
So then what materials could he use, Lisa?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did that wrong. You get 10% more of the allowable, I believe.
I thought you get 10% of the area of the driveway.
Let me take a look here.
I thought it was a 10% discount. So if it's 100 square feet, it's actually counted as 90, I thought.
Right, that's what I thought, even though I don't think it, yeah. So how large is your driveway, sir? How many square feet?
I don't know that I have that number off the top of my head here. Uh, I don't know that I have that number off the top of my head here.
Reinhardt, I had, I, well, uh, Mr. Coleman may decide that he wants to go that way. He didn't, i- indicated, uh, earlier today that he wanted to keep the, uh, asphalt driveway, and so my question had been specifically about the walkway areas, uh, which is a much smaller, uh, uh, percentage, um, but would help to mitigate some of the, uh, or reduce some of the variance request.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Riley, uh, that comment, yeah. The, the driveway, I mean, the, the price point of the driveway using, um, the asphalt as, as indicated versus, uh, some sort of, uh, brick or, or other locking mechanism that, that is impervious is, is, is substantial, and, uh, would pretty much exclude us from, from doing that.
And, and Lisa here, I'm sorry, the, the bonus is ten percent of the allowable, that would be sixty-seven point two more square feet.
This is, uh, John Klang, again, um, on that front porch, I'm, what, what is the, uh, the width of that, I'm, that five or eight, or five point five, eight point five?
It's five seven.
Right.
On the, on the width, and that, but that also takes in, that takes into account the deepest, the deepest section there. Um, there's a good picture of it there. Uh, you had, as noted, it, it's not five seven throughout the entirety of the, of the, um, space, given how the, the current house has a, a jet out at the front door. Um, and then it's, uh, uh, twenty-eight foot, four inches, uh, across as the width of the house.
Okay. I mean, if, if you were to run a, uh, you know, a piece about a foot wide right along the house there to, to, to prevent the, uh, overflow, would that accomplish what you're looking to accomplish? I mean, you don't end up with the porch, but you, you know, protect yourself against the overflow fling.
Yeah, that would, I think we, we looked at that and it would look extremely awkward. Um, it would be very, very, very odd looking. We'd have to, uh, I don't know how that, we, we'd be able to make that work.
Well, how high is the walk, uh, uh, I mean, how high up is it that it, it, it prevents the water from getting to the, uh, base of the house?
I think the current porch is, uh, is like one step up. Um, I don't, I don't check time. I don't seem to have that, that number on this drawing.
Are you saying it's a step up, like eight inches or something?
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And there, this is Bob Sermon, sorry, uh, Maria. Um, so is there a crawl space below it? I didn't realize you're building a whole big foundation wall out in front. Um, it doesn't identify itself as a crawl space, but it's, um...
No, there's, there's no crawl space in the front, underneath the, um, underneath the porch.
Well, I guess there's a full foundation wall, so, you know, I'm just, I'm really concerned about, you know, the, the request being that, you know, that you need the additional porch to redirect water. Um, you know, if there's a small amount, but this is a ten percent request, so.
Well, if, if my calculations are, are, which are approximate, but, uh, are generally correct, um, if, and Lisa was talking about a sixty-seven square foot, uh, reduction, then it would be about a seven percent ask if you, uh, changed to pervious favors for the sidewalk areas.
And, and like mentioned, we're already, we're already over the, the calculation, again, partially because of my, my, my neighbor's driveway, um, that comes onto my property.
Could you show that slide?
I'm sorry?
Could you show that slide?
Yes, sir. So that's, that's the stone wall, is stone wall here and, uh, and driveway right here as one piece. Um, and then, and then additionally, because of the house being non-conforming already, and so the house already sits there, so that's, the house, the existing house has the additional coverage, the existing, uh, driveway, uh, which, uh, um, you know, obviously takes up the entire amount of the, of the property, um, to the front house. And so the current, current coverage is already over the, um, the required amount. So I think the, the ask, while asking ten, ten point two percent based on, on current, the ask is, is, is much smaller, or is smaller than that. I, I calculated an approximately, uh, five percent of additional coverage based on the, um, the porch.
Just, just Lisa, to go back to Riley's, uh, comment, the sixty-seven square feet was ten percent of something, right?
Yeah, that's the, um, the allowable coverage. The thirty percent is allowable.
So are you saying that if the, the, uh, the pedestrian walk, not the driveway?
No, I'm sorry, the ordinance requires that all flat surfaces be, uh, an impervious, I'm sorry, a pervious surface, uh, with, yeah.
Including the driveway? So I just, I just wanted to clarify that for Mr. Pellet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you, can you repeat the clarification?
Well, Lisa?
Yeah, so the, um, the ten percent bonus, uh, applies if, um, all of the flat surfaces in the yard are permeable, meaning there's not a fig, not a solid joint in between the pervious paper or whatever. So the driveway as well as the walks would need, would be that.
So I, I couldn't, I couldn't get the ten percent bonus per just the walk, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, the board can take that into consideration, but it doesn't change the numbers.
Got it, thank you.
Plus, as you said, uh, Mr. Coleman, that it, the, doing that for the driveway would be very expensive. Uh, any other questions for the, for the applicant? Hearing none, I will then, uh, see if there's anyone else that li- would like to comment on this case. Ms. Roberts, is there any other interested party out there?
There's no party I know of, but if someone has tuned in and wants to do so, they can do so.
They can do s- they can do so now?
Yeah. And, and Mr. Randoff, have you gotten any comments on YouTube?
We have no comments in the chat.
Okay. So, uh, with that, uh, I will close the test in front of Mr. Coleman and, and ask for a motion.
I'll move to, this is Riley Pelton, I'll move to recommend granting a request for a three point four one foot front yard setback variation and a two hundred and thirty square foot or ten per, ten point two percent front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition and new front porch on the legal non-conforming structure at four seven two Highcrest Drive in accordance with the plan submitted.
A second?
Second.
Okay, Riley has a second. Uh, Mr. Pellet?
Um, well, I, I certainly understand the, the concerns about, uh, um, the coverage, um, and setting a precedent. Um, I think in this case, um, and I don't know how many of, of us were able to get out there and actually look at the house, Mr. Sermon and I were out there, um, at the, pretty much the same time today. And it's a really odd street in that you go down to one cul-de-sac and it can, then turns and continues, and there's another cul-de-sac, and he, Mr. Coleman, uh, and his wife are at the very end of what should be a cul-de-sac, but it's just the, where the street terminates. Um, and he, uh, there is a, a manhole there, um, and you can see where the neighbors have tried to protect themselves from the water by raising the level of the driveway, um, which has negatively impacted him and his request today. Um, I think that while the porch is, uh, different, um, than the other houses, it makes sense to me. Um, he's not, uh, impacting the, the, substantially the existing trees, um, with, uh, what he's building, and he's, um, trying to do, retain water on the property, um, by building the, the dry well and the, the water storage, uh, facility in, in the rear yard. So, um, I think, um, with those aspects in mind, that, um, I can support his request for a variance, um, from the, the, uh, relevant, um, regulations.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Choker Urban?
Um, a- a- and I feel the, just the exact opposite as Mr. Pellet. Um, I feel that, um, adding more impervious surface to the front yard is only going to aggravate a problem that already exists. I'm heartened to hear that, uh, the owner plans on, uh, creating some type of catch basin in the backyard to hold some of the stormwater, uh, but this is a sizable porch, it's six feet deep and twenty-nine feet across. Um, that's a lot of area, and, um, I'm, I, I will be voting against this proposal simply on the basis of the porch. And I think the garage makes sense, and everything else makes sense, but the porch, I don't believe, uh, a case has been made for hardship.
Thank you.
This is, uh, Bob Sermon, and, um, you know, I think most of it is very good, you know, for the, uh, the two-car garage, uh, maintaining the driveway. Um, I can appreciate the, the well in the back, um, but my, my gut feeling is that well accounts for the excess coverage that already exists or will exist from the front walk and the sidewalk, but I really have a hard time with the additional five percent for that covered area in the front. So, um, I won't, you know, I, I won't, I won't be able to support it, but at the same time, uh, I want to make sure that, uh, the applicant is aware that, you know, that he could make modifications to this and continue it to the next meeting if he desired to do that, because, uh, if the, the porch was reduced just to a front entry porch, I would then be able to support it, but with the larger porch, um, I can't because of the size of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Sermon. Uh, other comments?
Yeah, this is John Klang. Um, so, yeah, I have no issues with the, uh, garage and the, uh, issue on top. Um, you know, I think there, there is a hardship here as it relates to water, and we, you have a lot of, um, uh, you know, different, uh, applications over the years where water's been an issue. Um, you know, the real, I guess the question is, is, uh, you know, I can see how there, there could be some type of a embankment there to prevent water from, uh, cresting over and going, you know, down the foundation. Um, you know, do you need, you know, a three-foot walk would accomplish that? Uh, do you need five point seven? You know, uh, at that point in time, we're probably talking about half of the one thirty, which is sixty-five, which, uh, is, you know, uh, a much smaller percentage, um, because I think there is a hardship here as it relates to water and that some form of a barrier there is appropriate. So if I cut it in half and, and look at half of that, I, I think it, it becomes more of a, a beneficent feature, and, um, so I think I can support this, and, um...
Brad, um, I'm torn. I understand the need for the barrier, and a barrier may be appropriate, but, um, I'm of the opinion that the concrete porch is a little bit, uh, too much. And I, in a sense, it's kind of interesting. I mean, all what we're doing was, is the owner is pushing more water to his backyard, but whenever someone says, that I've heard in the past, someone talk about pushing water into their own backyard, it seems that the water also seems to go to other yards, to other people's yards. So while I would agree, um, and actually, I guess I'm following what, what Bob is saying, um, that there's, uh, good reason to, you know, do some, um, variances with respect to the garage and the driveway, but there's got to be a better way to do the, uh, the foundation, uh, the, the barrier, the concrete barrier in the front of the house.
Thank you, thank you.
This is Chris.
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I do, I mean, I, I agree with, um, those, those comments that Brad just made, that, um, you know, I think increasing the impervious surface is just exacerbating the problem, and, um, there are probably other ways to solve the problem. So, I have no problem with the garage and the walkway and the stoop.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, my comments are, are similar. I, I am not convinced that, uh, the only way to solve the water problem in the front part of that house is by building a, a covered porch. There must be other ways to do so, and if, if that is the case, I don't see the hardship in, in building the full length of, the porch, the full length of the front of the house. Uh, I agree that it, covering the entrance is appropriate, and there surely must be other engineering solution to do that. So I, I'm inclined to also, and I agree, I could support the, the, the addition as well. So I would like to ask the applicant, it looks like, you may, before we take a vote, it looks like you may get a negative recommendation here, and so you, you, I think, Lisa, we can give him the opportunity to come back with a revised proposal at the next meeting. Is that, can I, can I defer it?
Yeah, if, um, the applicant agrees and you'd like to make a motion and vote for it, sure.
I guess, uh, he needs to, uh, Mr. Coleman needs to know the impact, too. If, if this is a negative recommendation, uh, you can't come back with a new request for an entire year, uh, where if you continue it, you could make modifications.
Yeah, but Bob, Bob, we're, we're an advisory board, and the Board of Trustees will ultimately make the decision. If we, you know, if we are negative and they say it's okay, then, I mean, he gets to do it and he doesn't have to wait a year, so.
That's true, I agree.
Yeah, they can overrule us, but it, it does have to be supermajority by the village board, so.
So I, so I think we can give the applicant today, uh, the opportunity to defer to, uh, make revisions as discussed, as we heard from the members of the board, and, and bring it back at the next meeting, which is July fifteenth, or likely there will be a negative vote here, and, uh, you will have to take your chances with the Board of Trustees on July twenty-eighth. So it's up to you, uh...
Am I, am I allowed to ask a question?
Of course.
Is it possible to sever the two requests so that I get a positive recommendation for the one request and a negative for the next, the other request?
Uh, Lisa, I don't think so.
I'm sorry, no. You definitely...
Um, the only way to do that, if, if, in my understanding, is to, uh, continue it and come back with a revised proposal.
Right.
Okay, then we'll, uh, we'll see to continue and, uh, and look to do it. I appreciate everyone, everyone's comments here. Uh, we were intend, obviously intending to do this very tastefully, uh, and we have studied the, the issue quite a bit, um, but I, but I appreciate everyone's comments here and, and the, the position of the board.
Okay, so, so pursuant to a request by the applicant to continue to the next zoning board meeting, which is July fifteenth, I need to make, uh, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, move to continue, uh, matter twenty twenty dash Z dash eighteen to July fifteenth, twenty twenty, uh, seven o'clock.
I'll second that, this is Riley Pelton.
So we'll call the rules, Lisa?
Uh, Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Klang?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pellet?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Choker Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider? Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So that's an affirmative vote and it will be deferred or continued to the next, to the next zoning board meeting on July 15th with a revised request, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you to the board. Appreciate everyone's time. Good luck, man.
Good night. Can we call the next case, Ms. Roberts?
Our next case is 2020Z15, 3848 Lake Avenue. This is a request for a 0.18 foot side yard setback variation and a 0.14 foot combined side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a substantial addition and remodel that is classified as a new home. I believe our applicant is here.
Is Mr. Khan here?
Don't forget to unmute yourself.
My name is Daniel Ford. I'm the architect on the project. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Khan was on the phone. I don't know where he disappeared to. He maybe got cut off.
Hello, can please yes?
Mm?
I'm here, this is Tom Khan, from 2048 Lake Avenue.
You guys even can hear you?
Okay, and I have Dan with me. He's one of the, my is Dan Mayonka.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Daniel Ford. I'm the architect on the project. Essentially, what we're looking to do for the project is to take an existing two-story house that is in existing noncompliance, is 0.17 feet past the east setback in its existing condition. And our goal is to demolish the first and second floor of the house while retaining the existing foundation and then construct a new second, two-story portion of the house on the existing foundation and then additionally add a front addition thereby increasing the overall size and square footage and footprint of the building.
So you intend to demolish it all except for the foundation walls?
Yes, sir.
Will you keep the first floor floor or not even that?
Not even that. The existing house is a masonry, a combination masonry and frame, and the new house will be constructed entirely of masonry, including the new front addition.
What is the foundation?
It's about a 12-inch thick concrete wall that's almost eight feet tall.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
No, I just, this is Bob. I just have to say it's a very small request.
Agreed, agreed. But we're advised to put this forward to make sure all the proper processes are done.
Sure, I understand that.
Hearing no one else, is there anyone that would speak, that would like to speak other than board members that would like to speak to this request?
We do have a neighbor representative here tonight, Mr. Hollywood.
Mr. Hollywood?
I'm here.
All right, so, so earlier...
I have two callers in. I'm going to unmute you both and maybe we'll get Mr. Hollywood. Oh, shoot, I can't, I can't unmute.
One of those callers may be me. I didn't know if Teams was set up properly, so I'm using my phone and Teams because I didn't know which one was going to work properly.
Gotcha. I'm sure it can take me a minute to see, but I know Mr. Hollywood was here and he does want to object on behalf of the neighbors to the west.
I have his letter pulled up with the phone number if that helps you.
That would, that would help.
Wait, there's an 847-329-1111?
That is not anybody currently on the call.
Okay, there's also a 773-972-8287?
Yes, yes.
Okay, unmute them.
Unfortunately, I can't do that. The individuals need to unmute themselves and if you, I think you have to dial like star six or something to unmute yourself?
Yes, it's, I believe it's star six to unmute manually.
Should we hold up a sign to the screen saying star six?
I think you've got him. Mr. Hollywood, are you there?
I hear star six.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Hollywood speaking again.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Again, Bernard Hollywood, attorney, representing the adjoining property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Gerald McGlocklin at 3850 West Lake. As the board members know, these homes in the 3800 block of Lake are quite close together already by the well-met standards and therefore it is important, particularly important to maintain the minimal spacing required by the existing ordinance and as these are living spaces between parties, there's also the risk of water infiltration if this variance were to be granted. In reviewing the plans submitted on behalf of the petitioner and hearing the testimony so far this evening, I've seen no evidence or personal evidence as to what if any hardship it would be imposed on the petitioner to conform with the existing minimal side yard setback and combined side yard setback at these locations. Minimal standards that should be dealt with and followed. Thank you.
So I have a question for you. 3850 is approximately three times the size of the existing house at 3848. What steps did your, the owners of 3850 take to mitigate water and abate water to the neighbors when they expanded their house?
I'm not aware that there was any water infiltration from high-rise property onto anyone else's.
So why would you assume that there would be at 3848?
Well, because I'm assuming that this construction job would require a new sidewalk along the west edge of the property, reducing the infiltration of water into the soil and running it off somewhere.
I don't think, I'd have to ask Lisa, this is Bob Sermon, but I don't think there's an impervious question here. I think it's more the relationship of the house to the lot line is the issue. And I think the hardship, just to review it now, which, that the hardship is they're trying to use the existing foundation, which shouldn't impact the water. And the hardship would be, it's an existing condition and for them to put a new foundation in just to move it less, or whatever it is, one foot.
Well, it's two inches.
Oh, two inches. Yeah, to move a foundation, well, for two inches is a tremendous hardship.
Well, the petitioner has chosen to go the new home route and the minimal setbacks are required.
But they are using an existing foundation. So if, to move it over two inches times the length of the building is such a minimal request, I think it's unreasonable to ask the applicant to move their wall two inches to accommodate the particular code. That's my feeling. I'd like to hear from the other board members.
Yeah, if there are other questions for Mr. Hollywood or for the applicant, please. The board members, if not, any other questions for the applicant?
I do not have any further questions.
Okay. Hearing none, and we've heard from the attorney for the neighbor, Mr. Hollywood, have we had any other communication of this? Does anybody else want to, other than board members, want to?
There have been no messages in the chat.
Okay.
A letter from the east neighbor was emailed to you today in support of it and there's been no other...
We have that. Okay, hearing, hearing none, I will close, close the testimony and ask for a motion. I'll make a motion. Mr. Klang?
I would recommend granting a request for a 0.18 foot side yard setback variation and a 0.14 foot combined side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a substantial addition and remodel that is classified as a new home at 3848 Lake Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
I'll second that. Is that Mr. Sermon who spoke first?
Yeah, well, I don't know who spoke first.
Okay, Mr. Sermon. Go ahead, Mr. Klang.
Okay, so, I mean, this is a situation where, you know, basically enough of the home's being removed that it should be treated as a new home. And in those situations, typically there should be no variances. And, you know, we had one of these last week, which is back this week. When you look at this, I mean, it's basically two inches. The foundation, you know, is two inches out right now. It will remain two inches out. I think it's unreasonable to say, we've got to pull out the foundation and move it two inches to the right. There are no other variations requested as far as impervious surface or things like that. So I think it's de minimis. I think because of that, it's something that I can support and it meets the standards of review, so.
I think Mr. Klang said it very well, that it is such a minimal request and I believe it would be hardship if they had to move a foundation wall. So I can support it.
This is Riley Pelletin. I would add that I greatly appreciate the letter from the neighbor to the east at 3840 because their property or their house is considerably closer than the one to the west is to the subject property. So while I agree about the de minimis request, I think that the people who potentially greatest affected by this are in support of it. So I can support the request.
This is Maria Choka Urban. All of the reasons already stated. I also feel comfortable supporting this request.
Yeah, this is Chris. I agree. It's a very minor, minor request. I can support it.
And this is Brad. Same reasons everybody else has given, I can support it.
Yeah, I am, I do understand. And it is the code, while the code is clear that if it's to be treated as a new building, then there shouldn't be any variances. But we've had more significant cases where we treat it as a new building and we've approved significant variances. So in this case, I mean, this is clearly, we have some room for judgment here and I think the code would allow that or the interpretation of the code or the, or using the code as guidance. It's not absolute, in my opinion. And to expect to move the foundation, concrete foundation that is 25 or 30 feet or something, tear it down, tear it out and rebuild two inches, I think is, is not reasonable. That imposes a hardship that I think is not necessary and I can approve it. Mr. Roberts, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Klang?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this goes as an affirmative recommendation to the Board of Trustees, who will meet on July 28th. And I will need to move, I will need another motion, yes?
Hi, this is Bob Sermon. I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020-Z-15.
Is there a second?
Second, seven.
Call the roll, Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor Felk?
Yes.
Mr. Klang?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pellet?
Yes.
That's it?
The chairman's, yes.
Oh, I forgot you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't mind. Okay, Ms. Roberts, can you call the next case, please?
Our next case is 2020...
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Our next case is 2020-Z14, 1627 Elmwood. This is a revised request for a 449.66 square foot lot coverage variation, 54.57 square foot total floor area variation, 08 front setback variation, 1.55 foot side yard setback variation, 0.4 foot combined side yard setback variation, a 0.55 foot side yard eve setback variation, a 2.08 foot front yard stoop setback variation, a 7.58 foot front yard step setback variation, and a 92.1 square foot backyard structure impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a substantial addition and remodel that is classified as a new home.
I'm sorry, the applicants are here.
Good evening. This is Danny Dowd, the owner. So after, after listening to our neighbor's comments last week, we decided to build a conforming garage without a rooftop deck. So basically what we're requesting now is a variance based on the non-conforming structure and our addition up on it, which we're doing only on the one side. The main variance is, is the lot coverage ratio and that's just to do with the, with the lot narrowness and the existing non-conforming footprint of the structure. And then we also added a front stoop just to bring the current, the front current stairs up to current codes for safety and aesthetics for the neighborhood and the home. And I don't know if you guys want to go through everything again to kind of refresh your memories or...
So there's no more exception for the flat roof railing, right? Because there's no flat roof?
No, we're not, yeah, we're going to do a gable, gable roof, conforming garage.
Any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
I guess I, this is Bob Sermon. I guess I thought I saw a request for a swallow height variation. Is that still in here or no?
That was eliminated.
Oh, okay.
That was just the six inches for the parapet walls.
Oh, okay. I guess I have a question just from looking at it a little bit further. On sheet number 1.10, is that the new second floor?
Let's see, 1.... So 3.0 is the new second floor. Page five or...
1.5?
Let's see, page five of the packet.
Does your packet have numbers in written on the very bottom?
Yes, it's 3.0. Uh, let me see, maybe it's cut off in here. Uh, let me see, maybe it's cut off in here.
This is what, this is the packet that Lisa emailed us late this afternoon, I think that you're talking about.
Oh, it's not the printed one?
Oh, I can look back, let me see, let me pull that packet up.
Okay, I didn't realize there was a new packet sent for a floor plan today.
I think they got rearranged because of the added stoop. Um, there was a letter in there for the stoop.
Yeah, there was a letter, but I think all the, the packet should be the same, right, Lisa?
The floor pla, plans are the same, other than the stoop, yes, for the building.
So it ju, it has the, on the east side, we are doing the, the, we're gonna do the gable on the front of the property, and then the east side dormer.
Okay, but what sheet is the second floor? Some of the stuff is, uh, faded, and I, I, you know, I don't know. That's why I said the very bottom, you don't show, does anybody else show it in their packets with the numbers on the bottom?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on the screen now, Bob.
Okay. All right, so, if you could, yeah, that's the correct one. So whoever has control, if they could just scroll down a little bit? Okay, perfect. Um, so what am I seeing in the way of that stair that's sticking out there?
So that's, that's, um, under the existing roof line?
Oh, it is.
Um, that is not being, um, currently, the staircase is on the south side of the property, between the kitchen and the dining room. Um, we're relocating it to the front of the property to give access to those bedrooms, um, and have an open opening.
Okay, so that's where some additional lot coverage is? There's that much space?
The lot, uh, the lot, so the lot coverage is, is mainly due to the, the existing, um, uh, footprint of the property, and the added garage.
I guess when, I don't, when we've had people in the past, uh, present plans, they show, some way identify which walls are new and which ones aren't, so I have difficulty with that.
So there is a demo, there is a demo plan. Most of the, most of the load-bearing walls are, are stained, other than the staircase.
So you're building a staircase, that's part of your lot coverage?
No, uh.
Can you go back to the test?
Does the, does the, uh, what's reflected on the second floor is not reflected, uh, in terms of the footprint on the first floor? So is it cantilevered out?
So we're gonna, so basically, it's all under the existing roof line and footprint. We're, so adding the second floor does not enlarge the lot coverage in any way, shape or form.
When you go to one point one zero, it looks like it's projecting out. Well, okay, I see it now in the attic space, I guess, okay.
It's a sloping, you can't really worry about that.
That's a current, uh, dormer in the back.
Oh, okay.
So there's, we're working with an existing dormer, we're actually eliminating, um, there's a, there's a dormer on the west, um, we're actually removing that, it says remove existing dormer. So we are removing that in order to help, um, our case for the square footage, because we are requesting a fifty seven square foot variance.
Okay.
So if, if we had, if we were to tear this house down, we could build basically the same home that we're proposing currently, um, we would just be able to rearrange the rooms, um, and maybe take away from other rooms in order to still have the same number of bedrooms and bathrooms. Um, the main hardship is working within, you know, the current footprint and, um, structure of the property.
So the second floor, you're really only utilizing a portion of it?
Correct, and we, we originally proposed it on the west side of the property, um, but those neighbors are actually, were closer to that lot line, um, so my architect had proposed to put it on the east side, because those, those neighbors are further away from the lot line on that side. Um, and we were trying to stay within the setbacks, but that still didn't, didn't work, just because of the existing footprint. But we are not enlarging the existing footprint, um, of the home.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this plan now, uh, I just wanna make sure I'm oriented right.
Sure.
Are the bathrooms towards the backyard?
Uh, bath, bathrooms are north. Um, the staircase is, is the front of the home.
Oh, the scare.
So we're looking, we're, it's, it's directionally correct, so north is up. So we're adding, um, we're adding the three, the three bedrooms and then the two baths.
On the?
Second floor, or under the existing roof line, just we're dormering the roof.
On the east side of the building.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I guess I'm, um, still a little, can you scroll down a little bit more? I guess I'm confused when I look at the east elevation. Um, it appears that that, no, yeah, that it goes, that the building.
That's the back of, or, that's, let's see, that's the front of the home, and the home faces north.
Okay. Well, when you go to the east elevation, and what would be one point one three, it stops at the chimney. So now, can you go back to one, and it shows just a sloping roof in the back there, existing roof to remain? Can you go back to the one point one, sorry to be so difficult, and show me the chimney?
I wonder if, I wonder if the elevations are reversed? It might have been the original proposal, which was on the west side. Um, he might have not updated.
Where's the chimney on one point one?
Yes.
On?
That's the east, or, that's on the west side.
Okay, but, okay, so that?
That's getting removed.
Back to, go back to the other plan.
There's two chimneys there. Yes.
So there's a big, when you look at the elevation, I'm just confused, these drawings, uh, don't make sense to me. When you look at one point one three, it shows a large area where you're gonna maintain a sloped roof. Um, I see the little part in the front, but I don't see that slope in the back anywhere. Looks like you're building it taller.
No, we're, so we're, we're just removing that, we're, we're going with the original, um, ridge line, that's gonna be the point of contact for that proposed dormer, um, so there's no height addition.
But if, if you can show me on the plan where the chimney is, there should be an angled roof on both sides for a large portion, so where is the chimney on that?
So we're, we're removing the chimney, and that's just gonna be a slanted roof line.
So why don't you show the west elevation, if you can, if you can?
So then, I'd be.
Where is that whole, that whole area in the back shown on the plan?
This is the front.
It's on the front.
This is the, this is the front of the house to the right.
Okay.
This is the east elevation, I mean, the west elevation.
So you're not doing anything on the west?
So we've just removed this, we've just removed the chimney on the west side and that dormer, we've eliminated.
But if you go back to the east elevation?
We have increased the height of that chimney because of the, just code requirements for the, because that's the fireplace chimney, which we're gonna reuse.
But it looks like your floor plan extends the full length of that side, where that's not reflected on the east elevation.
It does, so the, the bathrooms stop at that chimney, and then there's a ga, it's, it's.
Oh, I see, and there's more. Yeah, it's really not, I guess now I see, it's not, it's not drawn very well.
You could see, you could see the corn, there's a, there's a box right to the north, that shower, the second shower.
Okay.
That's the chimney.
I understand. Your architect just didn't delineate it very well, there should be, you know, an area showing the roof line there. So, okay, sorry to take all this time.
No, no, that's okay.
Any other, any, any questions for the applicant, any others?
I have a question for Lisa. So Lisa, as I look at this, uh, new one, uh, it says the existing lot coverage is nineteen hundred point forty six?
Yes.
And on the previous one that we got last week, it said the existing was fifteen hundred four point fifty eight square feet. So what was, what was the differ, uh, what was the?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure how the plan reviewer counted that space, but it looks like, um, if you remember on the, on the plot of survey, um, there's, there's that kinda back porch that exists, and, and she didn't count necessarily everything under the roof back there. And so I reverted to the applicant's numbers, which are the full length of the dome, sixty feet by the, the width, to get to the nineteen hundred, which she had originally described. I think that is.
Okay, and then on, uh, the garage bonus, the existing home gets one, and the new home doesn't get one?
Correct, as a new home, it does not get that bonus.
Thank you. So, so, just to make clear, so the, the maximum permitted lot coverage would be one thousand five hundred seventy seven, is that correct?
Yes.
And the existing is nineteen hundred, and the proposed is two thousand twenty nine?
Twenty six.
Say again?
Two thousand twenty six.
Okay, right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Hi, this is, uh, Bob Sermon. I do have another question that doesn't pertain to this, but I'm just curious, uh, Danny, where are you proposing to put the air conditioner? I don't see it identified on the plan.
Um, so in the new updated plan?
I can answer.
They're gonna be, um, in the, in the, within the setbacks, I believe they're ten feet out. Let me see, I can pull up. Lisa, do you have the updated, um, drawings from David that he had emailed, or that I, I actually emailed them to you? I apologize, let me see, I gotta, let me do a screen share. So they're gonna be on the, on the, um, south side of the, of the, of the existing structure, um, to the, as far east as we, as we're allowed. So to the east of the, of the back stairs, leading to the.
So they'll be conforming in the backyard?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we, we've tried to do everything as, as conforming as possible with this, with what we're, what we're given. Um, I know we mentioned, or you, you guys had mentioned that a lot of builders come in and take advantage of, of these regulations, and I, I really don't think we are doing that. Um, we're trying to just beautify an existing structure, um, and keep it going from the landfill, so. Um, if we wanted to take advantage, I think we would propose an entire second floor on top of this existing structure, um, but I don't think that would be fitting with the neighbor, neighborhood and, and existing.
I have an unrelated question. If you look at the, the west elevation, there is something like a little, little, little three by three plus door on each end of the building that seems to look like an access to a basement. Uh, what is that? The west elevation? I mean, the east, the west elevation, yes, the west. So, if you, on the, on the, on both here, on, on the, on, on both ends, there's this little square.
Yes, so, so there's an existing, um, underneath that current porch, um, there is an existing walkway, there's, there's existing, um, concrete stairs going to the basement, so it's a walkout. Um, that's gonna be utilized as an egress. So we're gonna keep the existing concrete stairs, um, we're just gonna cover, cover them and allow access for safety.
So the interior stair does not go to the basement?
It does, so the concrete stairs, or, the interior stairs will go, um, but there, there's an additional stair, walkout to the, to the back of the property.
Okay, sorry, I didn't wanna take, that's not relevant.
That's okay.
I do have, if anybody else has a question, I do have another one.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is Bob again. So, my understanding now that the numbers have changed on that chart, that you're not going beyond any existing footprint on the house, is that correct?
That's correct.
You're not extending the front, or, you are asking to request the stair?
Yes, and we're, we're mainly requesting setbacks just because of the existing footprint, um, but we're not exceeding those setbacks.
And that, that hasn't changed from last week to this week, correct?
Correct. The only thing that's changed is the added front stoop and stairs, and, um, the removal of the rooftop deck and stairs.
There must have been something with the request before, maybe that made it different. Um, I do have, uh, still one more now, if I can remember it. Oh, I just wanted to note that I, when I was out there today, I know there's a big issue with the neighbors, but I noticed the homes on either side are, both have second floors and are taller than your, than your home, so, um.
I think all the, yeah, all of them on the, on the block.
I just wanted to note that, that that's, uh, you know, you're not, it's not like they're one-story houses on the side and you're going taller, they're already taller than you.
Thank you, thank you for that comment.
Any other questions? Mr. Sermon?
No, I'm done, for this case.
Okay, uh, I think I see a, a neighbor, uh, that, that may want to speak, uh, would you please go ahead, your name is Richard?
Oh, hi, uh, thank you. So quickly, again, thanks to everybody on the board for your time, and since you're experts to implement your mission here, which is a challenge, the devil's in the details on all these things, and, and again, uh, thank you for your work and for the, for the village staff in this regard. Um, the, the, the applicant has accommodated, you know, my major concern, which is eliminating the garage rooftop deck, that, uh, for the reasons I described last week, were, in my view, completely inconsistent with the character of the community and would be intrusive. Um, a, and without that, uh, you know, I trust the board to figure out whether the application, uh, technically, new construction, but working with the existing, so, the older structure, i- is close enough to the middle of the stairway on the types of factors that you, uh, evaluate, uh, to get a thumbs up or a thumbs down. So again, I appreciate your time, and I'm very glad that that rooftop, uh, deck on the garage, uh, has been eliminated, and I'm, I followed up with, um, with Lisa and John to see if maybe the zoning ordinance shouldn't be amended to prohibit those types of, uh, garage rooftop decks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Lisa, that is?
Yeah, um, several of the neighbors from last time are here, so I'm just. Mr. Firster, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a, I have a, I, I wonder if, if the, the stairway on, that's being added to the back of the house is included in the, the variance, is that included as part of the footprint and covering, uh, covering the structure, because it's, it's a, it's a significant extension beyond the existing footprint. Right now, the, the stairway going down from the house is, is within the footprint of the house, it's a little porch, clearly, and now there's a wooden, um, looks like a wooden stair that projects out from the back of the house, and I have no idea whether the, how the ordinance is, once I decide a concrete, it's kind of, you can read it from the ground, but, counter that.
Lisa, can you address that? Now, I know that the front, the front stair needs a three, three-foot landing, which doesn't exist right now, and, uh, that would push it out three feet, and that is a, a variance request, but can you address the rear stair, Lisa, that the, that, uh, this, this person commented on?
Yeah, I think that was, that was the difference, um, in the, uh, you got from Friday, um, so, uh, I'm gonna share the plot of survey. When the reviewer did the initial review, um, this area back here was not included as existing, and it's my understanding that that is under roof, if that's what Mr. Firster is talking about, so that was, uh, should be included, wasn't as an existing part, and is now included as, um, you know, old or new.
I think he's actually referring to the new steps that lead from that area into the backyard.
Right, if you look at the, if you look at the west elevation or the east elevation, there's a stairway that goes out the back of the house, or the first floor plan. Is that the back or the front?
That's the back.
That's the back, yeah, that's. If I may make a comment, um, so that's, that's mainly gonna be taking over the existing walkway that is there right now, there's a diagonal concrete, um, walkway to the current first floor, or for current one-car garage, so it's mainly just taking place of the concrete that's there. So as far as impervious surface or anything, it wouldn't affect that.
But, uh, it projects out of the rear of the house in a way that the current house doesn't have.
Correct.
Yeah, on the left there.
That, that's the front, so you're talking about?
That's the back of the house.
On the left, I'm talking about on the left, the rear of the house, there's a new stairway that's projecting out of the back of the house that does not exist currently.
And your concern about that is?
It adds to the, it essentially adds to the footprint of the house, but that's not the kind of structure that's included in the numbers that the committee uses to make the calculations, then it's, it's in the area.
I would say that it's important, to the extent that it would encroach on setback requirements, but my understanding, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, because these stairs are not under roof, they're not part of the store area, and maybe they're part of the lot coverage, I'm not sure, but-
Yeah, no, they're not. They're not high enough and they're not covered.
Okay.
Okay, do we have anyone else in line to ask a question, Lisa?
Yep, sorry, let me get back to the list here. All right, we have, Mr. Andre, I'm not sure if you're here for this case or not.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Andre.
Okay, is, this is regarding the request by IBC International Bank of Chicago? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, that's coming up, hang on, yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Then next I see Mr. Garvish is here, if you'd like to speak. Don't forget to unmute yourself.
Mr. Garvish?
This is Star Six, who's on six.
I think we've got, Mr. Arsh, are you there? Doesn't look like you're muted, Danny? Oh, now you are. Well, we can come back to you. And then there's another, there's, what's showing up is an unknown user, so I'm sorry, I don't have a phone number or any identifying thing to call you out, but if there's anybody else in the queue wants to speak on this case, the floor is open.
Hearing none, I think we-
Excuse me, Brian Hard, it's Bob Sermon, I still have one more question, believe it or not. Yes. Can you go, after seeing the west elevation, I just wanna, can you go back to the west elevation, Danny? Did you control that?
Lisa was controlling it.
I just had a question. So the landing is on the front door side or the back door?
So there's gonna be, now there's gonna be landings, we're proposing a new front stoop on both, both the front and the back. So those are the existing concrete stairs?
Oh, I see. So there will be a landing on both sides?
Correct. So they'll mimic, both of them will mimic each other.
Okay, now it makes sense, it just didn't show that, so. Alrighty, I understand. Last question for this case, maybe.
Okay, and we've tried to get other speakers on the phone. Yes, Lisa?
I think we've given everybody an opportunity. Rachel, is there anybody on chat?
All right.
No one on the chat.
Can I make just one more note, that I'm just looking at my computer on the side of other stuff you sent us? We did have one other letter from Gilda Becker, which I believe was still expressing concerns, but I assume everyone saw it.
Yeah, yeah. Gilda Becker said to try to get information to attend tonight and send her something, but I'm not sure if she'll be on.
Okay, I think, I think we're ready to close the testimony and ask for a motion.
This is Riley Falton, I move to recommend granting a corrected request for 449.66 square foot or 9% lot coverage variation, a 74.07 square foot or 1.5% total floor area variation.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's outdated.
That's outdated, okay. Well, then somebody else can have to make the request.
I move to recommend granting a corrected request for 449.66 square foot or 9% lot coverage variation, a 54.57 square foot total floor area variation, a 4.08 front yard setback variation, a 1.55 foot side yard setback variation, a 3.4 foot combined side yard setback variation, a 0.55 foot side yard eve setback variation, a 2.08 foot front yard stoop setback variation, a 7.58 foot front yard setback variation, and a 92.1 square foot or 9.21 rear yard structure impervious to this coverage variation to permit the construction of substantial addition and remodel that is classified as a new home at 1627 Elmwood Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Have a second? Second, second. All right. Maria, it's your turn.
I believe that the owner has addressed the main concerns that were raised by neighbors at the last meeting, and that most of the remaining variations in this request are a function of the existing footprint of the house and requirements for ingress and egress from the home. And I can support this measure.
Who was the second? Do we have a second? Mr. Falco?
Yeah, I think I seconded it.
Okay.
I would agree with what Maria has said. I think that a huge effort has been made to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors, and I think this will be an improvement to the neighborhood in light of what's there right now, working within the current structure, which is, quite honestly, not the most attractive structure on the street right now, but which has potential. And I think that the applicant has made a really good faith effort to meet the requirements for approving the variances.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, this is John Kaling. So basically, you know, with the extent of the remodel, this is supposed to classify as a new home, you know, we just got another one of those, which I think had, you know, two very de minimis variations that were required here. Many of the variations are also de minimis. There's a total, instead of two, there's a total, I think, of nine, which, excuse me, pause a little bit. Most of them are de minimis. The two bigger ones relate to lot coverage and rear yard structure, impervious surface coverage. And typically with those two, I would not be in favor of this. I would think we're going a step too far as far as new construction, remodel. But most of that, if not all, that relates to the garage expansion. And I think the village is in favor. I mean, the garage that's there right now, I don't even know if it's usable. But to put in a two-car garage is something that obviously the village is in favor, it takes cars off the street. And because the square, the lot, total lot coverage variation and the rear yard impervious surface relates to that addition to the garage and having a usable garage, I can get over the hump and I can support this.
Any other comments?
This is Bob, and I'll keep it simple, I concur with my colleagues.
Thank you. Other? Mr. Falco? Any comments?
I said I, I said I agreed as well, and this is Chris.
My turn. I, I keep, we keep seeing these requests, and I've seen several of them. We had a small, just a previous case which involved two inches. This is seemingly more than two inches. And I am, I am always concerned when we see these cases, which essentially are more expensive, in my opinion, or could be more expensive than if they had started from a blank slate. But if they had, they would have been constrained to 1,577 square foot lot coverage rather than 2,029. And that is a significant, in my opinion, that, I don't understand what the hardship is here, and the cost will probably be more than if they had a new building. And so whenever we see these requests, I understand, I question the motives. And I agree, it is a部分of what is there now, which is in bad shape. And if the neighbor can stand, I don't know, but based on the standards of the school, considering this to be a new building, as if a new building, I cannot support it. So can we please call the role, Ms. Roberts?
Ms. Chalk Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Kaling?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pellet?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
The chairman votes no. So that will go with a positive recommendation to the village board on July 28. I'm sure you'll want to be there. And we, you will be sent a note by Ms. Roberts indicating the date and where you have this to meet. Now we need a-
I'm going to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020Z14.
Second. Okay, call the role, Ms. Roberts.
Ms. Chalk Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pellet?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Kaling?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your extra time tonight and putting me into your busy schedules. Have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, please call the next case.
Our next case is 2020Z19, 1,100 Central Avenue, Unit 1. This is a request for a special use for a medical dental clinic, small, to permit the operation of One Magnificent Med Spot. And the applicants are here.
Please go ahead, identify yourself and your address, please.
Good evening, Chairman Schneider, members of the zoning board. My name is Chris Canny, and I represent One Magnificent Med Spot. With me this evening tonight are the co-owners of Fleming Hoy and Stephanie Zek. Fleming and Stephanie, please introduce yourself.
Yes, hello, I'm Fleming Hoy, and this is-
Hi.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Thanks for having us.
Chairman Schneider, what we're going to do is briefly discuss what the request is. Fleming will tell you about the business. I'll go over the standards of review for the special use. And then Fleming, Stephanie, and medical director, Dr. Sarah Dickey, are available to answer any questions you or the board may have. May I proceed?
Yes, please.
So unlike the cases you've heard this evening that were variations, this is a special use. It is, I think, a very straightforward request by One Magnificent Med Spot. Undoubtedly, you are all familiar with the building where this request is going to go in, and I assume all of you are also very aware of the fact that this space has been vacant for a number of years. It has had a number of non-retail uses over the years because it's simply not suited for a retail location. Most retail locations want to be directly on Central Street or on Wilmett Avenue. So this, this is a little bit off the beaten path, but works out very well for what the med spa wants to do in this location. What I would like Fleming to address is what the med spa is, to give you an idea of what it's like, how they've outgrown their home in Winnetka, and how they want to come to Wilmett, not only because of our vibrant downtown, but because of the clients who they serve in Wilmett. And in your packets, you have a number of letters from Wilmett residents who have used the services of the med spa, as well as multiple Google reviews. And what I'd like you to kind of think about this application is, it's very similar to, I think, Skunk Works, which a number of you heard, I believe, in either late 2019 or early 2020, or even going back to Niyama Yoga over on 12th Street. Both service businesses, which moved Wilmett because of our vibrant Village Center, brought clientele from outside of Wilmett, who then were able to take advantage of our shops and our restaurants and our coffee shops. So it's that increase for traffic, which I think will be beneficial to our businesses as they begin to try to rebound from our COVID-19 pandemic. So I'm gonna flip it over to Fleming and Stephanie, let them give you a little background on the business, and then I'll come back. Fleming retained me after he'd submitted his letter of application, and I'll run through the tennis standards of review that I believe are all met here, and give you some information about that, so that can be included in the report. So Fleming, why don't you take it from here?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chris, and thank you for this opportunity to appear before the board. One Magnificent Med Spa is currently located in Winnetka. We operate Monday through Fridays, 9:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m., and we offer a variety of medical-grade services and skincare product sales. And we offer those sales to clients who come in for skincare, as well as clients who walk in from the street who are interested in acquiring, purchasing our skincare products. In the current location we're in, we are in the fortunate situation that we are growing out of the space. The business has been good to us, even despite the current COVID situation. And we have been on the search for a new location in the area and in the neighboring villages around Winnetka, Glencoe, Wilmett, obviously. And the location in Wilmett is a location that we desired from the beginning we saw it. The downtown area speaks to us. The specific location, which is with the entrance off of 11th Street, is a little bit off of the Main Street, Central Avenue, which speaks to our type of business, which is a bit more of a quiet, quieter street, if you will. And that works well for our type of business. In the review of the commercial space, we have been reviewing very thoroughly each location that we've been looking at. The commercial traffic obviously is important to us. Other types of businesses, we've reviewed closely. We have competition and parking areas as well. We have competition and parking areas as well. And with the reference to the zoning hearing, we, as Chris mentioned, had sent out a dividend ahead of this zoning appearance today. And we are fortunate that a good amount of our clients supported us, who will support for this relocation application to Wilmett. Especially, yes, clients who reside in Wilmett are excited about that. We have been already in communication with a few neighbors who reacted positively to our letters. There is a Forever Nails location on the corner of Central and Eleventh Street. And we had communication with them last week that they were excited about us moving into this empty space. They have clients in their business, have a request for facials beyond their nail business. And they said they would recommend our business to us. And obviously, we are in the same type of business in our current situation, our current location, where we refer other businesses to our clients, who is in synergy, if you will, with those types of interests. We are participating very much with those types of businesses who support one another and interview type of commerce as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, of course.
Sorry to interrupt, because I would like to kind of set the base thing here. I'm looking at one point five of the package. Maybe other members of the board have the same question. I am not sure what space... There's not, you don't have an as-prepared, as-designed, as-built plan? Or is that it?
We have, this is a preliminary plan that we submitted ahead of having our architect plan. Our architect, which is, I forgot his name, Stuart Shamen and Associates. Stuart has been preparing drawings already that look somewhat in line with our sketch here.
However... What does section one mean? Is that the extent of yours? I see that this drawing goes all the way to Central Street, right?
No, that was not the intent. The intent was to show the direction of the location. There is another business space to the south end of that end wall and the south part of the picture. Now, in reference to the sections, our initial thoughts were to break up the renovation of the location in two pieces, but we have gone away from that since then. We have decided, with the support from our architect and the contractor, and obviously with the permit that is going to be submitted for this space, the approval to renovate the entire space.
Could you go to one point four quickly, just a second? So your space is what is referred to as unit one, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so the one point five delineates all that space, I guess?
It does.
Okay. Will there be an entrance from Eleventh Street?
Yes, the entrance where, if you were able to scroll down just a little bit, please, right where the arrow comes in, there's a wall that curves about ninety degrees. That is the main entrance from Eleventh Street into the space. And then if you can imagine, you walk up towards the front desk area, which is right there, exactly. And so that's the initial thought. In the new drawings that the architect is in preparation of designing, we will be most likely applying to have two bathrooms in that space to accommodate for the code. We understand it's the new code for that location.
Okay, I was confused because it said Central Avenue, and I know there's a nail salon on the corner right today.
Yes, I apologize if that was confusing.
Go ahead, proceed. Sorry for the interruption.
Not at all. So as a business and a medical spa, we have been very active with the community. And we have been fundraisers, specifically the Mackenzie School PTA program we have sponsored in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, as well as give back to nurses and doctors on the COVID front lines. We are very involved in cancer awareness events and making our clients as if possible. And lastly, obviously, to the point of our clients, a good portion of our clients reside in Wilmett. And obviously, we are interested in moving closer to them, but as well as bringing clients from other areas into Wilmett, we are confident that people will come not just to utilize our services, but to utilize other businesses' services and restaurants, et cetera, in that area, since it's such a nice downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny, did I swear you in in the beginning?
No, you did not. Actually, that's a good point. If you could swear us all in, please.
I don't know if Fleming and Stephanie were...
No, no, I think they had to be swearing in the room.
Okay, so please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. In fact, Ms. Roberts and I talked about that earlier today. I should have reminded you. So you've heard a little bit of a background about what the med spa does. What I wanted to do, just to make sure the record is complete, if you don't mind, is run through the standards of review applicable to special uses, because they are different than the variation standards. I'm not going to recede.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, the number one standard is proposed use will be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Here, we know that we have a comprehensive plan. We have a Village Center master plan. We know that we want to mix the retail and service uses. We know that generally, service uses will bring in foot traffic and be complementary to the retail uses. Again, that is the belief of med spa, to be somebody who will be contributing to the vibrancy of the Village Center, not only by offering services, but hoping that those people who come for their services will stay and shop in our village, whether it's in our shop or in our restaurants. The second standard is the establishment, maintenance, or operation of proposed use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. Again, service uses will not, in general, be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. One issue that you should consider is parking for employees and clients. And here, we have ample parking, whether it's on Eleventh Street, whether it's on Central Street, or the boat ice block, either the top level or the lower level. So I think that won't be an issue. The third standard is proposed use will not be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property to the neighborhood for the purposes permitted in this district. In this district, we can have both permitted and special uses, retail, non-retail uses. This space has housed non-retail uses in the past. And this use will be, albeit different in type of... It's not a coaching situation, it's not a workout situation. Nevertheless, it's a service business and is consistent with other businesses that have been in this unit. The fourth standard is the establishment of special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the zoning district. As you well know, almost everything in our district is developed. So this is just sliding into a space that has been used in the past but has not been used for the last two years. The fifth standard is proposed use will not substantially diminish property values in the neighborhood. I would hope that this would increase property values, but I don't see any way a med spa would diminish property values. The sixth standard is adequate utilities, road access, drainage, and other necessary facilities already exist will be provided. All the utilities you need already exist. We've got streets, we've got water, we've got parking. So I think that standard's met. The seventh standard is adequate measures already exist will be taken to provide ingress and egress to the proposed use in a manner that minimizes traffic congestion. Again, ample parking throughout the Village Center to support not only the employees, but as well as the clientele. The eighth standard is proposed use will be consistent with the community character of the neighborhood of the parcel proposed for development. Again, this is something that is new and different. A med spa is being offered to the Village Center. I think it will enhance the Village Center.
Yeah.
I'm so surprised it's not my dog parking. I swear it's my dog. The number nine is the development of proposed use will not substantially adversely affect known architectural resources or cultural resources located on or off of the parcel proposed for development.
Well, you clearly are knowledgeable guys, Byron. And while we don't know each other... Today, hey, today went a long way and get me comfortable with knowing that you know what you're doing when you...
Who was speaking there? Who was it?
It wasn't me.
One of our other applicants.
With the dog.
What I was going to say was, I don't think the Optima Building currently is a archaeological, historical, or cultural resource that needs protecting. But I will have to say, when I met with twenty on Eleventh Street, I pointed out to him a little bit, this is a townhouse development, and I told him that that used to be the home of H.H. Holmes, who is the noted serial killer in The Devil in the White City. So, but that house has been knocked down, so even that's not an archaeological situation. So I think that standard is met. And last but not least, the applicant has made adequate legal provision, guaranteed provision, development of any offers, landscaping, public open space, and other improvements. It's all there in the Village Center. So we believe all ten standards of review have been met. Stephanie, Fleming, Sarah, and I are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Are there any other... Anyone else that wish to speak on this application or guidance application? Do we have anyone, Lisa?
I don't believe we have anyone tuned in already.
Okay.
Any comments?
For Mr. Kenny or the applicants?
Yeah, this is Roger Pellet, and I have one. How many customers do you have generally in an entire day and at any one time?
Okay, so currently, we see five to ten clients per day. And we're obviously focused in growing, but looking into twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two is when we're looking to grow in the area of seven to fifteen clients per day.
And how many employees do you have at that site?
So there will be two clients at all times, sometimes three employees.
Employees, okay. And do you know, I have not done this research, but I would assume that you have, since you're looking to locate your business here. Are there any other med spas in Wilmett?
There is, there is. In the downtown area, we have not found any. We have found one on the west end of Wilmett by the highway.
I can add to that. At the corner of Wilmett and Skokie Boulevard, there's another med spa.
Oh, images, yes.
Right, so I did the ribbon cutting for that. That's why I know it.
Okay. This is Brad Falco. I'm trying to understand. The request is for a special, for a medical dental clinic. Am I missing something, or is this essentially a spa? You kept, for example, using the word medical-grade services. You called it a medical spa. Why does that differ from a spa? And how does that ultimately become a medical dental clinic?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure why the dental part was in the paperwork. I wondered about that.
Lisa may be able to add to that. Go ahead, Lisa.
That's just the name of the use, is a medical or dental clinic, small or large.
What is the medical, what is the medical nature here of the spa? As opposed to simply a spa?
So our services are medical-grade, meaning that, for example, a chemical peel, we need to have Dr. Sarah Dickey on our staff in order to have a higher percentage of appeal than what a regular spa can carry. So a regular spa can carry a peel that's regulated through a hospital counter, where ours is a physician strength, so it's a stronger peel. With Dr. Dickey being our team, we're able to provide that service, as well as prescriptions for retail products and that use within our services.
And Stephanie, can you talk a little bit about your background with North Shore?
Sure, sure. I started in two thousand and four with E&amp;H, back with Dr. Fanner. That was before North Shore University Hospital became. I'm sure you're all familiar. So I held that medical spa back in Evanston. And then he went private practice, now in Kennelworth with his medical spa. I stayed on and started the medical spa for North Shore University with five plastic surgeons, which moved over to Northbrook. And we opened a second location in Northbrook, five oh one Skokie Boulevard. And I was there, I was a physician until two thousand seventeen, and then decided to start this medical spa with Fleming and Dr. Sarah Dickey in November of two thousand seventeen.
This is Dr. Dickey here, and I can comment a bit also on why a medical spa is separate, different than a regular day spa. It is a designation that allows more invasive and deeper treatments to be performed on people, still being done with the proper oversight and appropriately licensed individuals, but a physician needs to be overseeing the treatment. So we can perform things such as Botox, fillers, deeper lasers that penetrate the dermis rather than just the epidermis, whereas day spas are more about relaxation and, you know, cleansing of the skin, but not so much sort of deeper, more invasive treatments that may have higher risk profiles that need to have a physician oversight.
Who is speaking again? Can you identify yourself?
Dr. Dickey, I'm Dr. Sarah Dickey, the medical director.
Did I swear you?
You did not. I'm sorry.
I guess I should, shouldn't I?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give or have given? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants, or Mr. Kenny or Dr. Dickey? Given none, I think we can close. Abrogator, anything, anything new? Lisa? Anybody else?
No new emails.
There is nothing in the chat.
So I think if it's okay, no one else, we can close the testimony. And I can ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend, this is Bob Sermon, I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for a medical dental clinic, small to permit the operation of One Magnificent Med Spa, eleven hundred Central Avenue, unit one. In accordance with the plan submitted, the zoning board appeals determines that it will run with the use.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
This is Bob Sermon.
This, this is Bob Sermon again. Um, I think it's, uh, a good business, a good fit for that area. I'm not sure, I think it may have been previously a dermatology office. Uh, I'm not sure. I know there was one on that side of the building, um, but I think it's a great fit for it. I think, uh, we'll not, we'll be very excited to have you guys here, and I think, uh, Chris, uh, is very knowledgeable about this and did a great job presenting it, um, and I can support it.
Thank you. Was it Mr. Pelletan, who is the second?
Actually, Mrs. Urban.
I can also support this request, um, for the very same reasons that Mr. Sermon just articulated.
Any other comments from the members of the board?
Yeah, I would comment that, uh, I previously supported, uh, the use of a karate studio in the same building around the corner on Central, um, and that there is only one of, in, in that entire building, there's only one retail, uh, shop, um, and that's the wine cellar. Um, the other ones are dentist office, nail salon, a real estate office. Um, so I, I, I think that, um, I, and I, I mentioned this before in other hearings, that, um, the, the village i- is adapting, um, uh, to, um, more and more service industries and less retail, and that may or may not be good, but I, I, that's the, the way things are going, um, and that we're lucky to have a quality business that's gonna come in and take a spot that I can't imagine a retail store would wanna occupy.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. I, I too can support it. I, I mean, it obviously is not displacing a classic retail, retail store, and, and as we've all, all of you have seen and, and, and discussed today, that, uh, the retail, the classic retail world is changing rapidly, and so this is an appropriate use, use for this location, and I can support it. If, any other comments? If not, I will ask for a vote, a roll. Please, Lisa, can you do that?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norr?
Yes.
Ms. Pelleton?
Yes.
Cameron Schneider?
Yes, uh, so this is a positive recommendation to the Village Board, which will lead me, they may not hear this case at all, and, but it will meet on July 28th, uh, and you may want to be there. The, uh, you will receive, uh, from Ms. Robertson notice confirming the Village Board date, and, uh, you have one more small business to take care of, so one can move the...
All right, thank you very much, Chairman Schneider.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good holiday.
Thank you, you too.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020Z-19.
And I'll second that.
Call the roll, Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norr?
Yes.
Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, can we call the, the last case of the evening?
Our final case is 2020Z16, 611 Green Bay Road. This is a request for a special use for a financial institution. Oh, and the applicant is here, Mr. Andre Eble.
Good evening, everyone. Um, John Benson, uh, who is the Chief Operating Officer of International Bank of Chicago, was supposed to make this presentation, but unfortunately, uh, he could not be with, uh, us tonight because of a family emergency. So, uh, I was asked, uh, last minute to step in and, uh, present on behalf of the bank. I believe also, uh, hopefully, Mr. Eric Chang, who's a board member of International Bank of Chicago, he may be on, on the phone. Are you there, Eric?
Before you proceed, Mr. Andre and others have... Have you been sworn in, Mr. Andre?
I, I don't believe I have been sworn in.
Is, is anyone else that is going to speak on behalf of this case?
It looks like Mr. Chang has joined us, but he's muted.
Okay, Mr. Chang, if you can hear me, I need to swear both of you in.
Oh, I'm sorry, star six to unmute.
Okay, uh, so, uh, if you can raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that you will tell in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Proceed, Andre.
Um, just, just for a second, is Mr. Chang unmuted and on the, on the, uh, call?
Uh, so, uh, if you can raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that you will tell in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say I do. What was that?
I'm not sure.
That was the, that was the delay, the delay.
Mr. Eric Chang, can you hear me? Yes, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chang, Mr. Andre, please proceed.
Okay, um...
I do.
Eric, do you want me to make the presentation?
That was the, that was the delay, the delay.
Okay, I guess I'll go ahead.
I can hear everybody, but I, I apparently, that I, I tried to unmute, it's not working very well.
Okay, so, uh, I'm here to request, uh, a special use on behalf of International Bank of Chicago, uh, to relocate into the 611 Green Bay Road building, the residential Willmet, uh, commercial space. Um, as many of you probably are aware, International Bank of Chicago entered into a contract to sell their existing site at 1210, um, Central Avenue, uh, to Optima, and a plan to build a apartment building on that site was approved by the Village Board back on March 10th. And thus, um, uh, International Bank of Chicago was seeking to relocate their bank operations into the, uh, 611 Green Bay Road building, and, uh, the reason for this is they obviously wanna stay in Willmet, um, and decided that, uh, this was the most suitable site to do that in. It was, uh, close, obviously, to their existing site, and, um, they will be opening a branch office there in 3100 square feet, uh, which will contain a staff of approximately five people. Um, there will obviously be no drive-through, uh, associated with this space, 'cause it doesn't accommodate that, and, uh, the bank is, is planning to have, um, uh, an overnight depository and ATM accessible, uh, to walk-ups, and it'll be operating 8:30 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, probably 8:30 to noon on Saturday.
Associated with this space, 'cause it doesn't accommodate that, and, uh...
Eric, you gotta turn your, your sound down, please. Um, so, uh, in keeping with the fact that the, uh, the other thing I wanna say is that the manager of the bank is a resident of Willmet, um, I'm reading from what John wrote, uh, some notes that he wanted me to emphasize in this presentation. Uh, so this is rela- relatively simple request, um, the, the fact that they, uh, are making paving way for a beautiful development that's going to be, uh, enhancing, uh, the quality of life for many residents in the, in the Willmet area, and a great addition to the downtown Willmet, uh, area. I think a great thing for the bank to, to want to still stay in Willmet, um, locate into this space, which you know has been very challenging to, to lease up over the last, uh, few years since that development, uh, came online, uh, although recently, the, I believe the restaurant has, uh, uh, opened up there, and now this will fill the remaining space that was left over. So, that's basically all I have to say about it. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have, um, about it, and leave it at that.
Uh, I absolutely, so how many, how many employees will there be during the day?
They anticipate having five people, a manager, um, a lender, two tellers, and a customer service rep. Originally, they were only gonna take, uh, 1,800 square feet, but decided to take the remaining, uh, uh, space that was left there, um, because they thought, uh, simply because, um, quite honestly, the, the landlord wanted them to take that space and made it very attractive, uh, for them to do so. So it's probably a little more space than they probably needed, given the way that banking's being done today, um, and possibly in the future, um, so that's, they're only approximately five people staffing that location.
And where will they, where will they park?
Uh, they're, they've been granted parking in the building for, uh, five spaces in the building.
I was, I, uh, today I was at the, at your current location, yeah, I think today, and, uh, there's an area for parking for employee, for staff.
Mm-hmm.
And I counted eight or nine cars there. Is that, was that, were the customers parking there, or do you have...
Well, I couldn't, I, I can't adequately answer that question. I'm not sure Eric can too, 'cause he probably wasn't at the bank, it doesn't work at the bank, but, um, uh, the, the bank, the reason that they were even that location to begin with was because they purchased the, uh, assets of Premier Bank, which was the former occupant of that space, and quite honestly, International Bank of Chicago never needed a facility of that size to begin with. Uh, it just was, it came along with the purchase of the, of the bank when they acquired it. Um, needless, needless to say, they have another branch in the city of Chicago, and, uh, this particular branch will only be staffed by five people.
Do you expect a lot, a lot of retail, uh, business, in other words, walking business to the tellers and so forth?
I, I can't, I can't specifically answer that question, uh, you know, I don't, I, I can't, I don't work at the bank, I'm just representing the bank in this request. I, I would anticipate, well, first of all, it's only gonna be walk-up business, so there is no drive-through, and, uh, you know, they'll do their best to accommodate, keep many of the customers as they possibly can, even though they won't have the convenience of a drive-up anymore.
Where will the customers park?
Uh, customers will park on the street in front, there's adequate parking along, uh, Green Bay Road, on the side of Green Bay Road.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I, I would just add, uh, Reinhardt, that I was on the plan commission when 611 Green Bay was approved, and they were required to have parking for customers. So I'm aware that their garage does have the capacity to park customers for the businesses on the first floor.
Let's see. No other questions, uh, for the applicant, then we will, and is there anyone else that, Lisa, that wants to talk about this application?
Uh, Mr. Chang is back. There's no other, uh, commentary that I've seen. Rachel, have you seen anything?
There are no messages in the chat.
Okay, so I, uh, I, no question, no further questions, I will, I will close testimony and, and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Move to recommend granting a request for a special use for a financial institution at 611 Green Bay Road in accordance with the plan submitted. The zoning board must determine if the special use should run with the land or the use, uh, with the use.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it, Bob Sermon.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, you know, I mean, you know, the banks in Willmet, they, uh, sold the real estate, moving to a location a, a half a block or a block away. Um, they have a customer base, uh, you know, they've been in Willmet for an extended period of time, and it's a good, you know, good use of that space. I'm sure the building's happy to get it filled up, and, uh, I think it meets the standards of review. I can support it.
Uh, I can, uh, agree with Mr. Coling and, uh, all his comments.
Any other comments? Okay, then I, I, I do, I, well, I was hoping for an Adidas store at his location. I don't think that's gonna happen.
Not yet.
This is a, this is obviously a service establishment, it, it will attract some people, pedestrians, and, 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 uh, um, they may contribute to the other businesses, as they maybe do now, and, uh, so it's good to fill that space, and I can support it as well. Lisa, can you call the, the roll?
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norr?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
Cameron Schneider?
Yes. So this comes with a positive recommendation, uh, to the Village Board, Mr. Andre, and they will hear, they may or may not hear this case on July 28th. You may want to be there, or someone may want to be there. Um, and, uh, Ms. Roberts will send you a notice confirming the, the date of the Village Board meeting, which is July 28th.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to all members. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful Fourth of July weekend.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020Z16.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norr?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Cameron Schneider?
Yes. Um, is there anyone out there, Lisa, that wants to speak about anything?
Uh, I don't believe we have anybody else in the, uh, house that, um, is not in the room here.
Even your cat, Lisa? Your cat, do you have any comments?
He's full of comments.
Okay, I think we can proceed to adjourn, and, do we need to make a motion for this?
I just, well, first I have a question. When's our next meeting? The 15th, July 15th? 15, okay. So we're going back to two weeks now. Yeah.
So we need to, I guess, move to adjourn the meeting? Move, I'll move to, I'll move to adjourn the meeting. Do we need to call a roll on that one too?
Yes, yes.
Oh, my goodness. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norr?
Yep.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
Cameron Schneider?
Yes, and so, thank you, it's, it's now almost three hours. Your, your patience and, and your contribution, and you guys have a...